February 23rd, 2015. And this evening's meeting with the invocation this evening followed the pledge to our nation's flag led by Councilman Anderson.
Father, we come before you asking you for blessings upon our councilmen that are here. We ask that you be in this meeting, that you give them strength right now. And we all want to thank you for blessing their families during these inclement weather that we've been having, that you made sure that their families were safe and you gave them strength. For all of these blessings, we ask, let this meeting go according to your will, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's all again, just look at the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Council, you have before you this evening's agenda or any additions or deletions to the agenda? If there's none, I'll move for approval as the Senate.
Second.
Thank you. By Mr. Herr, second by Mr. Hutchinson. Questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have before us the consent agenda. Both items on the council agenda that are considered routine and non-controversial are remarked with an asterisk, they'll be acted upon by a single roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council so requests, in which event the matter shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. What's the pleasure of council?
For acceptance. Second.
By Mr. Herr, second by Mr. Dixon to accept their consent agenda. Any questions upon the motion? None matter part for the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persa?
Yes.
Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item number two on the agenda this evening is rescheduling the public hearing for proposed ordinance 2015-01 and 2015-02. The first reading and referral of the proposed ordinance was accomplished during the council meeting February 9th. And you'll recall, due to the cancellation of the February 17th, 2015 planning commission meeting, public hearings must be rescheduled. It's recommended that the planning commission public hearing be scheduled for Monday, March 16th at 7:00 p.m. And the city council public hearing be rescheduled for Monday, April 13th, 2015 at 7:30 p.m. At which time, the second and final reading and final action by council will take place. Copies of the proposed ordinance are available at the entrance to city council chambers, or they can be obtained by the city clerk's office. Any questions? See, now what's the pleasure of council?
Accept.
Second.
By Mr. Herr, second by Mrs. Williams to accept. Any questions on the motion? See, none? All those in favor signify by approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number three, presentation by Tyler Technologies, 2015 revaluation. I invite Melissa Bayer, Northeast Regional Manager of Tyler Technologies, promoting the world presentation scene. Good evening. I appreciate you taking time out of your schedules to hear my presentation. Within the next couple of days, hopefully tomorrow, maybe the day after, property owners will start receiving their new assessment notices. The revaluation was done in the last few months with a great deal of help from Cheryl and her staff. We did a great deal of sharing of responsibilities, which resulted in cost savings for the city. We did mostly the actual valuation, updating our models, which I'm going to go over briefly with you. And Cheryl and her staff oversaw the project and also did all the field work, so all the permit work, all the things that had to do with knocking on people's doors was done by Cheryl and her staff. Clicker. There we go. So first introductions, the revaluation process, what the results were and the statistics that we achieved, and then I'll open it up for questions and answers. So this was the staff, myself. I did work on the project quite a bit, and I've been around for a really long time because I started when I was 10. Deborah Christie was the project supervisor. Thank you, you gotta laugh, don't we? Deborah worked mostly from Rhode Island where she lives, and she was responsible for the land valuation, updating the neighborhoods and such. Eric Hardy was primarily involved in the commercial valuation, which is certainly a complex procedure for the city of Dover. There's a lot of very interesting, very unique commercial properties, as I know you know. Steve Bessio, maybe some of you guys remember him from five years ago, he was the project supervisor when we did the last project here. And he also did the commercial, he did the bulk of the work on the commercial properties. We're going to talk about that a little bit later, too. Chris Gobin-Messier, she works on your IAS software, and she also did a great deal with the residential valuation as well. And Elise Perre is the associate project supervisor. She did most, I'm sorry? Okay. I heard words. And Elise has 10 years of appraisal experience. So as you can see, there's a whole lot of years of experience. I'm very blessed having a gifted team that helped us with the values here in Dover. So why do we do revaluation? I think I already got that question once. We do it because of equity. Properties change, different classes of property change over time, and whether your data is accurate or not, you're going to see shifts in how property values are going to change over time. So particularly between commercial and residential, most people understand that kind of shifting. There is such a shift that is going to occur, and I'm going to make you wait until the last slide before I tell you what that is. So that is the primary reason that we do it. So over time, things like townhouses, condominium properties, modular homes, they may not hold their value the same as a single family or a multifamily, and then your commercial properties are certainly going to behave differently. They're all impacted differently by the market, and so we want to keep them all equitable so that people pay only their fair share of taxes. So we are conducting the revaluation for January 1st, 2015. That is our data value. So this is the process, which I'm going to go into a little bit of detail, so I'm not going to go into each one of these things. Phase one. So we kicked off the project in September. We did not have to do a data collection like we did five years ago. So what we didn't need nearly as much time as we did for the last project. We did do data mailers. So that was a new, do we do data? We did data mailers last time. So what data mailers are, is a property inventory sheet. It says, this is what we have for information on your property. If it's correct, great. If it's not, send it back to us. And then Cheryl and her crew investigated those, made the changes in the database, and did any inspections that were required based from those data mailer returns. We also sent out income and expense forms for income-producing commercial properties. That is the majority of the information that we're going to get for commercial properties. You don't, you're not going to have every type of commercial property sell. You might not have a CVS, or a Walgreens, or a McDonald's, or a franchise. You're just not going to have every type of property sell. So we need to supplement that information so that we can come up with good values. And the way we value those is the same way as an investor would when they're looking for properties to purchase. They want to know, how much rent does a property receive? Now, this is independent of a business that's running. So whether you have an Apple store in this building, or you have a farmer's market in this building, the actual business itself is not valued by us. We only value the actual structure. So the best one to use is either an apartment building, they get a certain amount of rent every month, they have expenses, they may include all the utilities if those are included. And then we take their net income and we capitalize it by a rate, and that gives us a value. That's how we value most of the income-producing properties here in the city. We did do some press releases. I'm not sure if any of those actually went out, but we did try to get some information out there. But the data mailer itself was a good notification for people that this project was going on. This is your opportunity to participate in it. Let us know what we can do to improve the accuracy of the data on your property. We also ran, I don't know, maybe two dozen, three dozen edits on the file. So we looked for things that were anomalies, properties that didn't have bedrooms, or had more bathrooms than bedrooms, all, a whole slew of edits to make sure that the data was also accurate. Those were done before the data mailers actually went out. From October to January, we looked at sales. We took two years of sales, of residential and commercial sales. And the first thing we wanted to do was look at neighborhoods. We thought that there was an awful lot of neighborhoods for the city, for the parcel counts that we had. And the reason why that is of concern is that every time you cross a neighborhood line, you can change your land value. So the neighborhood is an indicator of a specific location. And one of the things that's very unique about the city is the number of townhouse complexes that you have. So each individual townhouse complex had its own neighborhood. So we ended up with a lot of neighborhoods that we consolidated. So we did put some together so that when we're making comparables, when we're doing land values, that we don't have so many lines that we're crossing. We don't want to have two neighbors cross the street from each other with different land values. So that's what we're trying to avoid. So that was the very first thing that we did. While we were doing that, we were also analyzing the income and expense returns. Those were issued by the city. They are confidential. We did not share them with anybody. We turn all of that information over to Cheryl for her, for her use in the future, for defending values or whatever. We look at the cost values, and we use Marshland-Swift, which is a well-known industry standard for costs. We calibrated our models that we also use in our computer system against those. Because we're not going to go out there, we're not going to have constructions of a McDonald's and a Walgreens, and the same problems we have on the sales side, we also have on the cost side. So in order to get all the types of properties, all the exempt properties, what's the school cost to build? What is a town hall cost to build? We gather all that information from Marshland-Swift. And then we also ran market models. So we use several approaches to value. For commercial properties, we use the income, which I just talked about. We also use the cost approach. We can't do an income approach on a school, doesn't ever rent. So we have cost approach for properties that we can't do another approach for. There's no sales of them, there's no income generated by those properties. We have to use cost. For residential properties, we use the cost approach for the same reason. And then we use the comparable sales. So every property that we have comparable sales for, you will have up to five sold properties that are comparable to your own. And that was the basis for probably 85 to 90% of the residential properties. There were very few that we were unable to run comparables for, and those were typically the modulators, the mobile home-type properties, condominiums we didn't have enough sales for, and properties that were in poor, very poor condition. We didn't have sales of those, so it's impossible to find comparables for them. So from January and February, which is still right now, we did a review. So we created these models in our computer system, and I know I'm losing you, I can see your fade, and I'll try to hurry it up. We review every value. We look at every value to make sure it's consistent, make sure it's equitable, make sure that the data looks correct. And we do that for all residential and commercial properties. We then turn them over to Cheryl for her review, and then we refine the models, whatever we need to do at the very last minute, take a look at the new sales that came in, make sure we're consistent and equitable, and then we notify the homeowners of the new assessments, which we just did. So hopefully, they'll be getting those very soon in the mail. I think they went out Saturday. So where we are right now is we're going to schedule informal hearings. So if you hear any people coming to you with a complaint, please ask them to give a call. We gave you a copy in your packet of the notice, a sample notice that's going out. It's got our 1-800 number on it. So anybody who has any type of concern, they should give us a call so we can schedule a hearing. We will meet with taxpayers through, as long as we have, you guys have to file your rolls. So we have a couple of weeks to do this through March. Do we know the date? Is it March 20?
Yeah.
March 20. So we're going to get all that work done, we're going to resolve any taxpayer appeals that come to us, and then we will have some final documentation for you that describes exactly what we did for this project. So how did we value these properties? Well, we base the data on, we do mass appraisal, a little bit different than a fee appraisal in that our values are data-driven. So how many bathrooms do you have? How many square foot of living area do you have? Do you have air conditioning? That type of thing. All of that goes into a computer model, much like Zillow, for those of you who have gone on that, they use the same thing. It's an automated valuation model. So that's a little bit different than a fee appraiser who just goes out, looks at your property, finds the five most comparable properties. Our computer program selects the comparables, based on weighting that was done by myself, based on the things that drive markets. So what's most important? Usually, location is the most important thing. And then we want to look at size, style, and the age of the property as well. So how do we know that we did a good job? Well, there are standards. The International Association of Assessing Officers is the body that we point to when there aren't specific state standards and statutes that cover this. So these are the standards that we meet. So we look at level of assessment, and we want to be somewhere between 90% and 110% of value. And what that means is you take the value that we're calculating, what it's sold for, and that relationship, what that ratio is. The overall ratio, median ratio should be between 90 and 110. We're at 95, split the difference. Our price-related differential is going to measure whether or not we are over-assessing or under-assessing the high versus low-end properties. And then we have what we call a coefficient of dispersion, which is the COD. That measures how much disparity we have. So we could have a median of 95, but we could have sales all the way down to 40%, all the way up to 150%. So the dispersion is calculating how different from the median each of those sales are. So for 474 sales, that's the sales set we use for two years' worth of sales. The market was very, very steady during that time period. We're starting to see that the market is improving. We've actually seen that. We do have that seasonal thing where properties sell, we have less sales in the winter than we do in the spring, and that's starting to pick up a little bit. We're seeing that trend a little bit. So we're at 95. We, our disparity is about 6.5% from that median, and our price-related differential is one, which is perfect. That means that we're assessing the high-end properties equal to the low-end properties. Commercial, we only had 28 sales over two years. So we are at 100% of those with a dispersion of 7.98, and again, our price-related differential is one. And just to go back, so you remember, so all of our metrics are far exceed what the IAAO requires us to indicate that we have a very high-quality project. So, this is stuff that I promised. So what does that mean? That means that overall, the real estate, that doesn't include exemptions or anything like that, this is your gross real estate, it does include exempt properties, went down 2%. So dwellings themselves went down 10%, which means your commercial properties are going to absorb a greater amount of your tax burden from your residential taxpayer. Generally speaking, that is a desirable outcome. It is not something that we can control. It is completely from the market, and it is very reflective of what we've seen all over the east coast, where our residential properties have been down, and our commercial properties have actually gone up. And it's particular apartments, very, very, doing very well right now. Our retail, also doing very, very well. So those notices, as I said, went out hopefully Saturday. They should start getting them tomorrow, the next day. That is an error, I apologize. The tax bills will be in July, not April. And, do you have stuff online?
The values will be online April 1st.
Okay. The values will be online April 1st. And then I also gave you, that's the presentation, I also gave you in your packets what I call the impact report. And that just got a little bit more detail for you as far as what exactly happened. So if anybody asks you, I had them break it down a little bit. Single families are down 9%. Multifamilies are only down 3%. And then you can see condos. Condos have been hit pretty, pretty hard. You don't have a whole lot of condos. That does not include townhouses. Townhouses are in the single-family category. But the condos took a pretty big hit. And we just gave you some resales, because what's interesting is that every person didn't go down 9%. Anybody who's got a house didn't go down 9%. It's really important to understand that it could be a specific neighborhood that's impacted. We have neighborhoods that went up. We have neighborhoods that went down more than 9%. Condos went down more. Certain townhouses, a lot of it has to do with age. So the older townhouse complexes saw a bigger decrease than the newer townhouse complexes. So the resales are just there, kind of showing you what happened to the resales is exactly what happened. You're going to have some properties that went up, and you're going to have some that went down. So it isn't across the board. It isn't meant to be like, oh, well, if you went up, you know, if you went down more than 9%, it must be wrong. Or if you, you know, if you went up, then it must be wrong. It's just the overall is down 9%. And then I gave you some information on the commercials, and you can see that, as I was saying, apartments are up, you know, nursing homes. There are some things that definitely hold value, and then there are other things that went down. Parking lots, for some reason, that's probably one or two properties. Ms. Bayer, I think this is what you just asked. Yep, yep. I just wanted to finish that thought, and then I will open it up. But overall, taxable property was down 1.5%. And now I'm ready.
Commercial properties went up 6%. What about the large box stores that we have vacant still? Did those, did those properties go up also?
I don't know the answer on any specific property in town.
We have a, we have a probably anywhere, I don't know, maybe Cheryl knows, 6 to 10? Yeah. Huge box stores that have been vacated.
I know. Basically, what it comes down to is whether or not those can be repurposed. Some of them can, some of them can't.
Is there a time limit in your evaluation process for repurposing?
We have to value the properties as they exist as of this moment of time. We never get out the crystal ball, we never, you know, and that's hit us pretty hard in the last couple of years, because a lot of people felt like we should have anticipated that the market was continuing to drop, or that it was leveling off. We really have to look at the information we have at the time. So a property that's been vacant six months is going to be treated like a property that's vacant six months, whether we think it's going to be vacant for 10 years. We don't know. A property that's been vacant 10 years will be treated as 10 years.
That's on my question.
Okay.
I think, Cheryl, do you have the answer to my question about the large box stores?
I'll get, see what the values say.
Okay. I'll get that to you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bayer. Any other members of council have a question? Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have questions about, one, the hearings. That seems to be, we're talking about scheduling from February to March, well, now that looks like just March. How will that impact people's concerns and their ability to get the notice this weekend and to be able to get what they believe is a proper hearing of their property valuation?
I think we're allowing for about, that's like four weeks, if you count this week. And then we're going to hold hearings for, as long as we're here, we'll meet with people. So we certainly hope that that timeframe, if someone has a real concern, that they'll be able to see us within that four-week timeframe. We have some evening appointments, we'll do a phone hearing, we'll do whatever we can to accommodate people. The timeframe has to be the timeframe. I mean, you have a list that you have to, and that doesn't mean that their appeal ends if they can't get in to see us. They may have to appeal it through Cheryl, or whatever your process is. So we are just restricted because we sign a contract and we have to turn everything over. So it isn't that we don't want to spend more time, but as long as there are appointments available, we will continue to schedule people. Whether, there is a deadline on the letter, we continue to schedule as long as there are slots open. So we try our very best to accommodate everybody.
And what would you be looking for in appeal if I were a citizen and I were concerned? Because you combine neighborhoods, and some neighborhoods have a glut of foreclosures, were harder hit, and they're selling for lower than the neighborhood that's across the street. I mean, that legitimately happens. What would you be looking for, that if I were a citizen, I would want to be bringing to that appeal?
Anything that proves your opinion of value. So an appraisal is an opinion of value, and you can, anybody can offer an alternative opinion of value. So that doesn't mean I expect anyone to bring an appraisal. I don't want you to go out and spend $300, $400 for an appraisal. There's a lot of work you can do, looking at your neighbors, if you want. There's a couple of things. You can say, well, my property wasn't appraised consistently with my neighbors. And you list their neighbors, and, you know, they have a ranch, and it's the square footage, and my value's that. So you can go that approach, say, I want mine in line, because those things happen as well. The other thing is, if you've had a recent appraisal, within the last two years, bring that in. If you've had a, you know, if you've refinanced, or bought or sold your house. If you've bought or sold it, we should have that information. But a lot of people refinance, get a new mortgage, you got an appraisal, bring that in. You can have a market analysis done by a Realtor, if you've had it on the market and you have that information. You can even bring us just pictures. So one of the things that, obviously from that timeframe, we didn't go knocking on doors, we didn't do inspections. So there are things that we only looked at the outside of the house, and that's it. So if there are things that we can't see, water damage, things like that, that we need to be made aware of, bring in the pictures, and then we can make a judgment. Some of these may require an inspection, but we can usually schedule those within the timeframe to make sure that we accommodate everybody, and our ultimate goal is to make the value right. So we don't always, we look at 10,000 properties at once, so there may be something. We certainly look at foreclosures. Foreclosures are tough because they're not an arm's-length transaction, even if a bank turns around and sells them, they may be trashed, and then the new owner will turn around and fix them up. And they may not get permits. So foreclosure sales are really tough. But if there are a lot of foreclosures in a particular complex or a certain neighborhood, that is going to drive the value down just because they're competing against a market that is lower. So if the banks are all selling them at 60,000, you're not going to be able to sell yours for 80. So that impact should, you know, find its way into the market on its own, without us doing anything in particular.
Thank you.
Any other questions of council? Mr. Herr.
What's the total evaluation of all the properties before we did this and now?
There is, on page three, the only thing about this chart is that it doesn't include the exempt, so you just have to add that exemption to that total. And that's that number right there.
Down 1.5%.
Down 1.5%. Yeah, we just thought that you would, that removing the exempts would be a better comparison for you, when you're considering your tax rate changes and such. And this is subject to change. We still have informal hearings. We don't know what's going to happen with that, how many people are going to come in. Typically, we've been seeing less than 1% of the taxpayers coming in because the values are down. So we've seen a very low turnout, but there will be some change as a result of those, I would imagine. Any other members of council with questions? See, none. Thank you very much, Ms. Bayer, for the presentation. And I would note that, for the record, Tyler Technologies has 145 collective years.
And I would note that, for the record, Tyler Technologies has 145 collective years of experience in the appraisal business. And any resident who feels that their property was not properly assessed certainly has a right to appeal. And when you get your assessment, and for those watching on television this evening, when you get your property assessment and you feel that it's unjust, you certainly have a period of time in which you can appeal that property tax assessment. Thank you again, ladies. We appreciate you being here. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda tonight. The Utility Committee report from February 9th, reimbursement agreement with Pioneer Materials, the abandonment of the shallow well 7A. Mr. Koenig.
Thank you. At the Utility Committee meeting, we discussed a proposed reimbursement agreement with Pioneer Materials regarding the abandonment of shallow well 7A. This well was damaged a number of years ago with the result of the mining operation adjacent to the wellfield. Pioneer is agreeing to reimburse the city for the abandonment of this existing wellhead in the amount of $13,126, which the city feels is fair and covers our expenses for that effort. Then at the committee, there was a discussion about, there's potential in the agreement for Calp, or for Pioneer to provide additional compensation to the city of up to $50,000 for the construction of a new well, if one is constructed within 10 years. This clock began in December of 2007, so we have until December of 2017 to construct the new well. We have been working with the state of Delaware regarding the new permitting of all of our wells. And it appears that we are not going to, we're actually going to have a contraction of the permit associated with the Columbia aquifer because of concerns related to pumping of that aquifer and potential saltwater intrusion into the Columbia aquifer. So staff believes that it's a fair agreement. And if we're going to exercise our right for the construction of a new well, we'll be doing it here shortly with the evaluation of the plant that's underway. We feel it's a fair agreement to move forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Koenig? Thank you, Mr. Koenig. Pleasure of counsel, Mrs. Williams.
I'll make a motion that we approve this second.
It's moved by Mrs. Williams, seconded by Mr. Herr. Mr. Hutchison. It's hard to tell the difference now. All right. Thank you very much. Any questions on the motion? Madam Clark, call the board.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Berza?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Any motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Williams, seconded by Mr. Dixon to accept the report. All those in favor, 65, let's say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number eight, the Legislative Finance and Administration Committee report from February 9th, proposed ordinance 2015-05, fiscal year 2015, second budget amendment. Councilman Slavin.
Thank you, Council President. On February 9th, Legislative Finance and Administration Committee met and discussed this proposed ordinance. I believe in Mrs. Mitchell's absence, Mr. Koenig handled the issue, and I'm not quite sure who wants to address the issue right now.
I'll take care of it.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Okay. We presented at the last Leg and Fin meeting the ordinance for the revised in the budget for the beginning carry forward balances from fiscal year 14's audit. In conjunction with the council's policy on transfer and savings from prior year personnel expenses, we recommended a transfer of $643,000 to the pension funds that came out of savings and personnel expenses. And then additional adjustments were increasing the division budgets for the vacation sellback transfer and the contingency, to the contingency reserve, the final payment from the, from the contingency reserve, excuse me, the final payment for the police grievances, and increased a couple of revenue items for the county reciprocal borrowing and municipal street aid based on those known sums at this time. And then the transfer of $80,000 in capital project funds to the Parks and Recreation Reserve for project monies that were earmarked this year that weren't going to be used. So we just moved it into the reserve for next year, since that project's not going to be ready this fiscal year. In addition to that, we recommended that $385,000 of the extra carry forward money be used to replenish the contingency reserve for $300,000, and then $85,000 to the capital asset reserve in light of funding needs on the President's Council on Public-Public Partnerships for the future City Hall, Wine Hall, and Dover Library. Since then, the night of the meeting, that was changed to $65,000 to the capital asset reserve and $25,000 to the Parkland Reserve. I did note that there were some questions in the minutes, and I did want to let everybody know that the contingency reserve has a requirement of 2%, and it was up to, and that 2% would have been $700 and some thousand, about $750,000, I would say. And when we took the 300 out of that account, it brought it down to, brought it down from that amount. And there is no requirement. I did look at the financial policies, and it talks about using the contingency reserve in times of emergency, but there's no requirement as to how many years you have to replenish it or anything like that. It's silent on that. So, okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. The, heard the report. It's pleasure of counsel, the motion to accept the committee's recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Slavin, seconded by Mrs. Williams to accept the committee recommendation. Discussion is on motion.
I just wanted to confirm the numbers that you had read off to us. $643,000, you said, was directed to the pension?
The pension, pension funds. So it's $100,000 to the police pension fund and $543,000 to somebody else.
And that's per our policy for any carry forward balances to help pay down that unfunded liability.
Yes.
And that's over and above scheduled payments that we've made.
Yes.
So that actually puts us ahead of the game.
Yes.
And the $300,000 that then will fund us back to the 2% level?
Yes.
Okay. If that $300,000 were not used for the purpose, if it had been used for it, that would have also gone toward the unfunded liability?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Excuse me. That's correct. That's incorrect, because it's personnel savings that went to the unfunded liability. That $300,000 would have just been left there in the budget balance if you didn't decide to use it for something.
But we could have used it for that.
Yeah. You could have used it for that.
Thank you.
Further questions? See none, Madam Clark, call the board.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Berza?
Yeah.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Now any motion to accept the?
So moved.
Second.
By Mr. Slavin, seconded by Mr. Herr to accept the report. All those in favor, 65, let's say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Item number nine this evening is the selection of polling places for the 2015 regular municipal election. The City of Delaware Election Board met on February 19th, 2015, and has recommended the Elks Lodge at 200 Salisbury Road be utilized as the polling place for the 2015 regular municipal election being held on Tuesday, April 21st, 2015. What's the pleasure of counsel? Mr. Anderson.
Mr. President, is that just one polling place?
That's correct, sir.
For the entire city?
That's correct, sir. That's recommend, that's recommendation to elect.
Definitely not in favor of that. Thank you, just clarifying.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Mr. Slavin.
Question for Mrs. McDowell. What's the estimated cost of operating separate polling places for municipal election?
The cost would definitely increase because we would have to man each polling place.
So you don't have the hard numbers, but it would be more expensive to man individual, right? Thank you. And we've also had difficulty finding places in some of those districts. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think one of the reasons they chose, the election board chose the Elks Club is because the facility out on White Oak Road and Alice been demolished. There is no longer rotation out there. And the election board chose to have one polling place, that being Elks on Salisbury. Mr. and Mrs. Williams.
I was thinking, Mrs. McDowell, we could get to that figure, a full-scale election cost this city, what, $10,000 to $12,000?
Yes.
And divide that by how many voting places in the past?
Typically, there were three.
So you get, you get the figure.
Mr. Herr.
Two of the, two of the, two of the districts that are voting vote there anyhow, right? So this is just a substitute for the one that doesn't have a place to vote right now. So, I mean, I have to, yeah. So it's, I don't think it's, I don't see it as.
Any other questions? Mr. Anderson.
Is there? Mr. President, if you please direct this to Mrs. McDowell. Has there been any attempt to look at anything in the east or south of the city? The, I mean, it is a, I mean, there's, there's schools, there's churches, there's other factors in that area of the city, in the eastern side of the city.
Yes. The election board considered having the second and third district at the former public library behind us, which would be free. And it actually sits in the second district and borders on the third, so that would be essentially located to the second and third district. We also considered St. Andrews Church over on the highway. There's considerable expense to renting that facility. Over public library would be free. And the second, the typical second district polling place is not available for the election.
Seventh-day Adventist Church.
Mr. Herr.
There's no second district election, Mr. Herr.
They will be voting for the mayor.
Any other further, any further questions? See not much pleasure of counsel.
Motion on the floor, I think.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Williams, seconded by Mr. Hutchison to approve. Any questions on the motion?
Mr. President, I would, I would move that we would, in addition to approving the Elks Lodge, that we would look at a second polling place for the other half of the city. I just think it's egregious that for the entire city to be at one polling place with transportation issues that some people have.
That's an amendment to the motion.
It is an amendment.
I'll second.
Right. It's been amended, moved to amend, look at another location. Seconded by Mr. Slavin. First vote on the amendment.
So the discussion.
Mr. Pers.
Question, and if we're going to...
Speak on your microphone.
If we're going to amend the original application, are we voting to approve the location tonight? Are we going to wait and determine what the results of the search is going to be?
The amendment was to approve, was to specifically to approve the Elks Lodge and look for an additional location.
When does, when does that have to be complete by in order to have this set up for people?
It would have to do, if you have proper notice, it would have to pretty much be by next meeting, wouldn't it, Mrs. McDowell? Because we have to have at least 20 days' notice before the election, et cetera. So, I mean, with, after new terms, it would have to be within a month, but you'd want it as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
So where are we going, where are we looking to put another location? I mean, we're looking to put it in the Point area, we're looking to put it in South Dover area, we're looking to put it, where? We're going to put something that's really going to be centrally to what districts? I mean...
Let me, let me offer this to the maker of the amendment. Would St. Andrews be acceptable to you?
It would be acceptable. I mean, I would have no issue with, with that. Of course, I don't know what the, what the cost was.
I think it would serve us well to set the election sites today, since St. Andrews is available. That way everyone would know in plenty of time.
I would have no issue with that if the second or doesn't.
With the second or being a manual with that.
But what, what is the cost?
I believe it was $600,000.
Okay. You can live with that for...
For this, for the facility.
Right.
And that would be for the second and third district?
Right.
Question, and it is, would the second or the...
My concern is the second and third, you said? How close is St. Andrews to the second district?
Not close at all.
Very close. It is close, actually.
Okay, so people live out behind general food, that's real close.
It is in the third district. There is, probably the mayor's race in the second district.
Are we talking about the church on the, on 13th?
By the Walmart.
Talk about difficult to get to for people who are, who are trying, who have to go by foot, or people who have to, have to get a ride. That is, that's very, very difficult to get easy to get to.
It's up to the council. There's a motion on the floor to look for a second.
Not amenable to the change to the...
Thank you, Mr. Slavin. All right. Therefore, we are withdrawing the second, or withdraw the second on the...
I'll withdraw the second.
So we didn't change, just have the amendment?
We haven't changed, we haven't changed any.
Right. Just have the amendment.
So the motion before you was to select the Elks Lodge at 200 Salisbury Road, utilize the polling place for 2015 regular municipal election on Tuesday, April 21st, 2015. Pleasure of counsel.
Well...
Pleasure of counsel.
Are we point of order?
Point of...
Discussion, still discussion. We have a motion in the second.
Are we, are we still, are we, did the second or, do we still have the original amendment? I wanted to know.
The second or with, the second or with...
I withdrew my second.
Second or withdrew.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Pers?
I have a question. Do we have the option of sending this back to the committee, or to whatever commission it was that came up with this, to evaluate and come up with a single proposal that is the same for everybody across the board, rather than approving a poll site today, a second poll site in two weeks, and everybody getting confused as to what the story is, where everybody's going to be going? To me, it makes sense to do this once, approve it maybe in two weeks, once we have a better idea of what we're doing, rather than pencil-whipping it tonight. I get that we have to have this set up a month ahead of time, but we're only in February, and if the election's April 18th or so, we have a little bit of time. I think it would be more responsible to maybe meet, review, pick a single plan, whether it's two sites, three sites, four sites, and do one approval, rather than doing this in succession. Everybody's going to get confused.
Thank you, Mr. Pers. We're checking the council calendar.
The sooner you set the places, as people are out campaigning, I mean, telling the voters where to go to vote, I think the sooner the better. And if you're going to send it back to the election board, I think they would need to know we definitely wanted X many places, because their feeling was, we have a citywide mayoral election, we have the special, well, not the special election, but the two separate seats in the third, and everyone that voted at the last election voted at the Elks Lodge for the mayor. So they felt like Elks Lodge is familiar. If you get a place in the second, it's going to be a different place. If you get a place in the third, it's going to be a different place. So two districts are going to have to go to totally new polling places, where both of those districts voted at the Elks Lodge in July for the mayor. So everybody knows where that is. But the sooner, the sooner the decision is made, I believe, is the better.
Is that, sorry, is that a motion, Mr. Persson?
We've got a motion on the floor.
We've got a motion.
We have a motion on the floor.
No, no, it's just a comment. It's just a comment, we're gonna move forward and vote on whatever we're gonna vote on tonight. I just think sloppy. I think we should make one single motion at the same time on what the plan is, so everybody knows at the same time. And I get the candidates wanna know where they're gonna be voting, things like that, but if we vote on Elks tonight, and then two weeks from now decide something else, those same candidates are gonna be telling exactly the same, they want certainty. They're not getting their certainty tonight, of course, else we're still exploring. So there's no rush to do it tonight, and for purposes of getting them.
I would move to defer, refer it back.
Mr. Herr.
We, for years, the Elks Lodge was the place that all the districts voted. The last mayor election, as Mrs. McDowell said, they voted for the mayor at the Elks Lodge. It's probably as centrally located as any one location can be in the city. Access is easy. If you start, if you put someplace, there's no place, I can tell you, where are you gonna put in the second district that's gonna be convenient for the second district? Elks Lodge is probably as convenient as anyplace else, other than the Seventh Day Adventist Church, which is only convenient to the south side of the second district. The rest of the second district, off of White Oak Road, or out by the base, or behind the base, I mean, there's, so I think, I mean, I think the Elks Lodge is a good option, good compromise.
I move that this be referred back to the Elections Commission with the instructions that they find a second location.
Just vote on the motion that we have.
That was going to be, first of all, we have a motion on the floor.
Order of precedence, of course, to refer back to committee takes precedence. We'll vote on that first, just second.
That motion, Mr. Anderson, doesn't, I believe, have a second, does it?
If it is second, we'll have to find out.
We have second for Mr. Anderson's motion. Mr. Persson.
It's much named.
You're seconding Mr. Anderson's motion to defer.
I'll second.
Maybe we come up with five or six locations. You know, that way, we can have a lot of people voting all over the city.
Mr. Anderson's motion is to defer. It's been seconded by Mr. Persson. Motion to defer takes precedence of the initial motion for one polling place. We will first vote on a motion to defer. Any questions on the motion? Seen none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
No.
Mr. Persson?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
No.
Mrs. Williams?
No.
Mr. Herr?
No.
Mr. Hutchison?
No.
Mr. Butler?
No. Motion carries, or motion fails, 6-2.
Call the question on the next.
Question is called on the Elks Lodge, location at 200 Salisbury Road.
You gotta vote to call the question. Never mind, withdraw, call the question.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Just call the roll.
Just call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persson?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes, motion carries 6-2. 2015 election on April 21, that is the Tuesday, will be held at the Elks Lodge at 200 Salisbury Road. Item number 10 on the agenda this evening, let me double check to make sure, item number 10 on the agenda this evening is the first reading offered on proposed ordinance 2015-05, the fiscal year 2015 second budget amendment. Final action by council will take place during the second reading of the ordinance March 9, 2015. Copies of all proposed ordinances are available at the entrance of council chambers if taken from the city clerk's office. Mr. Conery. Or Mrs. Mitchell, I'm sorry.
Do I need to repeat what I repeated earlier?
No.
Okay. This is just, this is just the second budget amendment for fiscal year 2015, 16.
Move to accept.
Second.
By Mr. Herr, second by Mrs. Williams. Are no further questions, proposed ordinance, I'm gonna defer to the clerk for the introduction of the ordinance in accordance with section 1 of the 2015 document.
Proposed ordinance number 2015-05, fiscal year 2015, second budget amendment as amended by 11 A1.
Thank you, ma'am. Number 11, the final reading proposed ordinances, first reading of the following proposed ordinances. It was accomplished during the council meeting of February 9, 2015. Copies of the proposed ordinances are available at the entrance of council chambers. First, I'll entertain a motion to consider the final reading by title only, which is simply to allow the way being of the readings, a separate motion being necessary for their adoption. Pleasure of council.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Hutchison, second by Mr. Slavin. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carries unanimously. 2015-03, amending chapter 102 taxation, Article 3, the Real Transfer Tax, Section 102-71, definitions, Article 4, abatement of real estate taxes, Section 102-113, qualifications, and Article 5, tax credits for historic properties, Sections 102-52, application requirements in Section 102-53, the application review and approval with Historic District Commission. Amendment number one. Mrs. Townsend.
Thank you. This is an ordinance that reflects the incentives associated with the Downtown Development District. The main point of this is that where there are homeownership incentives and the transfer tax incentive for the seller in the downtown district, it changes the boundary to coincide with the Downtown Development District, rather than a smaller boundary that was, that is currently in the ordinance. Additionally, it changes the process for the review of historic preservation tax credits at the city level to be administrative and not have to go to the Historic District Commission. There was an amendment offered by the Historic District Commission that would clarify that if Historic District Commission approval is required for an architectural review certificate, that it does not negate them going to the Historic District Commission for that approval. So it simply refers back to the zoning ordinance as it relates to the architectural review certificate. So that's what that amendment does. But this essentially squares up the boundaries for incentives that are already in play and makes the historic property tax credit an administrative process.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Mrs. Williams.
Mrs. Townsend, would you explain again the change for the Historic Commission?
Yes. Right now, any application for tax credits for historic properties has to go to the Historic District Commission. So for instance, one of the eligible activities would be painting an old Victorian house.
Right.
And that activity of painting the house does not need to go to the commission, however, by virtue of the ordinance, in order to get the tax credit, it would have to. So we're trying, we're doing it, this ordinance would make it so that the tax credit approval is administrative, but the Historic District Commission would continue to see whatever projects they would need to see under the zoning ordinance anyway.
So they would be more, they would simply be conceptual?
Yes.
Instead of picking house paint shingles, tiles, roofing?
Right. And then the planning office could still refer any, any application for historic tax credit to the Historic District Commission as well.
For things other than concepts?
Well, if there's anything that comes before us that we're not comfortable and could use their expertise, we would refer to them. We do that routinely with, with building permits as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, thanks, and Mrs. Townsend. Any other questions, staff? Pleasure, council, with regard to the Historic District Commission amendment.
You accept the recommendation.
Second.
By Mr. Herr, second by Mr. Hutchison, to accept the amendment. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we need pleasure of council with regard to proposed ordinance 2015-03 as amended.
Move to accept.
Herr, second by Mr. Slavin. Any questions on the motion? None, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persson?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. We now have proposed ordinance 2015-04, amending and the C, downtown redevelopment. Mrs. Townsend.
Thank you. This changes the downtown redevelopment section in accordance with the Downtown Development District program in a number of ways. One, it takes the Downtown Development District and defines it in code as a high priority target area, keeping the current target area intact, so that people who currently qualify for, certain incentives would continue to qualify for those. It adds some new incentives. It takes the impact fee waiver, which is currently applicable only to multi-story mixed-use construction, and just makes it a city impact fee waiver, so it would be able to be applicable to a single-use, a single-story, a new house, those types of activities. It adds two new incentives for the high priority target area, and that would be, one would be a business license fee waiver for a period of three years for any new business established within the district, or any business that relocates to the district after March 1, 2015. And it would also provide a rebate of the buyer's portion of the transfer tax for properties that transfer after March 1, 2015, upon issuance of certificate of occupancy. The last thing that this does is it creates just a straight-up incentive. Currently, with the incentives we offer, you have to pay 10% of the value of those incentives to the Downtown Dover Partnership. This was discussed with the partnership. They agreed that foregoing that 10% was in the interest of just trying to make the incentives more valuable, so it takes that 10% out. So that is, in a nutshell, what this ordinance would do.
Thank you, Mrs. Townsend. Any questions, staff? Mrs. Williams.
Mrs. Townsend, if you lump all the rebates and all the discounts together, what kind of figure, I know it's based on, on the property, but just generally, and an average?
I've looked at a couple of examples that we're preparing for our workshop that we're having this week, and when you take the state incentives and the city incentives that we are offering, there are properties that are going to have $100,000 to $200,000 in incentives easily. A large mixed-use project like the Bayard Plaza would have more like $800,000, $900,000 in incentives, when you take all of those things together. So it really is enough to get some of these projects kind of over that point of being financially feasible.
And be significant-
Yes.
-savings to a developer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Any further questions from members of council? Seen none, what a pleasure, council, on proposed ordinance 2015-04.
Move the approval.
Moved by Mr. Slavin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any questions on the motion? Seen none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Persson?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Herr?
Yes.
Mr. Hutchison?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Now I have council members' announcements, and a member of council with an announcement this evening. I have one, more of a remark than anything else. I would like to thank everyone that works for the city for their efforts surrounding the bitter winter weather we have been experiencing. As a reminder that we aren't done yet, we still have 25 days left until the official start of spring, and I think most of us can barely wait. But I would like to hand out a big thank you to the Public Works Department for the City of Dover. Most people aren't quite aware, for the last few years, the Public Works Department has been down 13 staff members in that department. While it's helped the budget, it certainly makes a lot more work for the ladies and gentlemen that service in that department. I want to put into perspective what resources we have as a city during a snowfall like this, the last several ones we've had, and have to experience. We have six sanders with plows, we have five trucks that are plows-only, a few backhoes and loaders, and four skid steer tractors. And when snow hits greater than three inches, the people in the Public Works Department shift to 12-hour shifts, and crews have to continually maintain 7.3, 17.3 miles of emergency and critical routes. After they've maintained those routes, and after the snow stops, they can then move on to clearing residential areas. They total 184.4 miles of roadway to keep clear. A lot of people don't recognize that, but that's a lot of roadway. As the cleanup is underway, a partial crew is working on the 184.4 miles of residential roadways. We then bring in another crew clearing 53 areas of sidewalks in order to provide safe foot traffic. And while not every snowstorm deems all these efforts as being necessary, this winter has been particularly brutal, with our record-breaking temperatures and wind chills and the amount of ice that's been on the streets and sidewalks. I will certainly go along with the rest of you, and hopefully, we've seen the worst of the winter, but in case we do get more snow, we need to remember to remove vehicles that are parked on emergency routes within one hour of steady snowfall, to prevent them from being plowed. And also, when possible, making sure that roadways in developments are clear enough for plows to get through. I drove through some developments in my district after this snowstorm, and we had parked cars parked on both sides of the road. It made it impossible for a plow to get down that street to clear it out. And yet, these are the same people that were complaining to me about snow not being able to be removed. And lastly, use a little bit of common sense. Just because the snow stops falling doesn't mean you need to get out and go sightseeing. Stay home, let the road crews do their work, get our streets cleared as clear quickly as possible. Again, I'd like to say thanks for all of the people in the Public Works Department. Thank you for what you do, the time, the commitment, and most of all, coming out and making it safe for the rest of us, while we stay warm inside. Any other members? And Sharon, I want to make sure that you pass that along. Sharon Duca is the director of our Public Works Department. And nobody sees Sharon, she stays in the background, she's relatively quiet until her dander gets up. And Sharon, I want you to make sure you pass that on to the Public Works Department, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions by members of council?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, second?
Second.
We adjourn.